I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order. It is October 5th, 2017, and it is 7:05. I apologize for the late start. We had a workshop that ran over. So, we're a few minutes behind tonight. First item on the agenda is the roll call. Ms. Johnson, can you please do our roll call?
Commissioner Rainey.
Present.
Commissioner Lucas.
Present.
Commissioner Burks.
Present.
Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Present.
Mayor Carroll.
Present.
All are present, Mayor.
Thank you. Second item of the agenda is the prayer and pledge. And if you'll please stand. And bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for everything you've given us. Lord, we just lift up all the heartaches that's gone in lately in the news and all the people that have been hit with hurricanes and the devastating events in Vegas. And we just lift them up to you, Lord. Please guide us and direct us as we go through tonight's meeting, making decisions for the city and make sure that they are in the best interests of all citizens. Please guide and direct us, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item three is approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second.
Mayor.
Yes.
Two small changes on the agenda, just some mistakes that I made getting it out. The public hearing should actually be item 11A. And then, under number 11, item B, that's a first reading, not the second reading.
Okay, and say that again, then, that last one?
Item 11B is a first reading.
And Mayor, I'd like to add an item under new business C that we discuss and take action on, Board of Commissioners using a city-provided cellphone.
Okay, so you would be, it would have to go, okay, new business C? Okay, any other changes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the fourth item on the agenda is the public hearing. That'll be 11A.
Resolution 21-17, a resolution to annex certain territory upon written consent of the owners and to incorporate the same within the boundaries of the city of Fairview, Tennessee, tax map 42, parcel 77, 7312, Taylor Road, owner Kenneth R. Taylor.
Okay, do we have anybody here in the audience to speak out tonight? Go ahead. Please join us at the podium and say your name and address, please.
Steve Taylor. I own the property that's adjoined to Brother Kenny's property.
Mayor, is your microphone? I cannot hear you.
Yep.
Okay.
Just need to get a little closer. I'm Steve Taylor. I'm Kenny's brother who owns, I own the property that adjoins his property. And I'm just having a problem trying to figure out what would benefit from it being annexed. My brother seems to think that it's, would increase, increase the value of the property, and I just don't think that's so. So, I was kind of wondering if somebody could shed a little light on that. Does that really happen, or?
Yeah, I mean, it can increase his value just because it's city property, but that would be dollar amounts or why. I mean, typically, if a person wants to annex and they come in and there are so many other properties around it, we would typically talk. And we can probably answer more questions, you know, if you needed. But basically, the price difference of selling property in the county versus the city, the dollar amount, retail value, is increased, and it just kind of is what it is.
But is there any kind of percentage that anybody can give me of what they thought, they think, or what statistics might show that would increase it, like 5% value or 10% or?
I think it would depend on what services are going to be additionally provided because it's in the city, such as, if it came to the city, would it now get sewer or garbage pickup or some of those things, which I don't think necessarily apply in this situation? So, it may or may not.
The only service that they have right now is, is water. Sewage doesn't run that far down on that property, so they'd have to go into that.
It may be more of a hope that it's going to be worth more. It may not. I don't know that any of us could really answer that question. It may not change the value at all.
Right. That's the way I feel. I don't think it's going to increase the value of it 50 to 75%, which is what he's been told. So, I think somebody just blowing a little smoke toward him, and he doesn't realize it. But, yeah, I oppose it being, totally. I just don't see any benefit of it.
And I, we can discuss this, and we'll discuss more whenever something's voted on, you know, as far as that goes, as far as the city. But initially, when he presented, and there was a realtor there that has said that yes, it does increase. Now, it may just open up, it may make it more desirable because somebody, a builder or whatever, might not have to get it annexed. That is in consideration. But just for the average person coming to buy, I don't know that, if they weren't wanting to build a house, that it would really have that big effect. But some, when, when this goes forward, you know, we'll discuss and some of those questions again. This is just, now the process is so long to annex something in that, you know, this is, it is for the reading, but Ms. Costanza, it also, if you can jump in, they'll have to go back to the planning commission, is that correct, on the annexation?
No, this is the final, this is the public hearing, the final meeting.
Oh, this is the final. So, we're, okay. So, this is it. It's not as many as, we're already through so many, is, what was it, which one had to go back and forth? The other Taylor prop, the one that we didn't annex in? What was the difference? This is residential request?
I'm sorry. Say that again.
I'm asking her. I was trying to understand the difference. I was thinking there was more reading, that it had to go back in the planning commission.
Oh, well, it already did.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we're farther along than I thought. Okay. Well, when it comes up on the agenda item, we'll ask some of those questions again, as far as, this is just your opportunity to tell us why you want it or why you don't. And, yes, go ahead.
I just had a question, Ms. Taylor. I mean, if you believe that it's not going to increase the value of his property, then, and it's not going to have any effect on your property necessarily, why are you opposed to him having it annexed into the city? I'm confused.
Well, I don't want a bunch of houses because I, I've already spoke to a couple of other people that's brought up the fact that it could get rezoned again to have more properties put on per acre, whereas right now, it's one house per acre. Is that correct?
In the county?
In the city. If it was annexed in the city, it's one house per acre?
It would come in as a, as an RS40, yes. It would be one house per acre. It could be rezoned.
And then, and then the opportunity could come again for it to get rezoned again to have more properties, is that correct?
Potentially.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a?
I don't want five houses, much less 25 built on it.
Well, we're talking about a five-acre tract, if I'm not mistaken.
Right.
Is that right? Okay.
Well, and I, I understand your point. It could, but the realistic is because it is a five-acre tract. And then, as, there is one down the road that was just not annexed in. So, I mean, with that in the consideration, I mean, if he wants to annex in the city most of the time, and we are touching their other properties, you know, surrounding, then we would consider it for an individual. Versus, if it was a developer, I, you know, I don't know what would happen. They would have to go through and present their plans of what they were going to do. But if an individual with a five-acre tract comes in front of us, it's, it's considered a little different versus a developer that needs to have a plan approved or, you know, PUD approved, and then we would typically have more conversation.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Please.
I'm not sure that it's appropriate, and if not, I'm sure I'll be told. Has any of that property been sold? Has there been any developers that have approached you all about that property?
Had a developer approach my brother, and he was, he sold them a right-of-way from...
Who was the developer?
I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
Was that part of that large previous annexation request?
That's going on the backside of that property that it joins the backside of. It was the old Crawford Jones property. I'm not sure who owned it now.
Thank you.
And if I can ask the city planner, this property was previously part of the, the annexation request that was before us previously, correct?
No, just the 60-foot right-of-way that he's referencing.
Just the right-of-way.
Okay. If you don't have anything?
Appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming out. Okay. If that's it, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay, the next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Do we have any tonight?
There are none tonight.
Item number six is awards and recognition. And tonight, we have some guests with us, and we have a special proclamation. And I am going to invite whatever representatives that would like to come up and let me read the proclamation. So, if I can get some represent, y'all can all come if you want. We are very thankful to have a wonderful library group and the very involved friends of the library. And so, we have a lot of citizens out tonight. So, I'm going to join you down here. But before we get started, would you like, somebody like to take the mic and tell about some important dates that are coming up?
I'm Cheryl Hamilton. I'm president of the Friends of the Fairview Public Library. And we have an important week coming up, which is October 15th through the 22nd, which is where they honor all the Friends, the National Friends of the Fairview, National Friends of the Public Library System. And so, we will be having a reception for all of our, the community, if they will, to come to the library. And we also have Booth for Books. What we do, just so you know, is we, as Friends of the Fairview Library, what we do is we have book sales and various other venues, fundraisers, if you will, to create some money to give to the libraries, so the library can, has extra money to provide programs for children, the whole community. And so, it's, it's when the, you know, for, it's when we need extra things, that's where we come in to help fill up and, and the rest of the Fairview, help educate our children. That's what we're about. And that's it.
Thank you so much. So, with that, I'll go ahead and get started. The City of Fairview Proclamation, National Friends of Library Week. Whereas, Friends of the Fairview Public Library raise money to enable our libraries to move from good to great by providing resources and additional programming, needing needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. Whereas, the work of the Friends highlight and ongoing faces the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect through the ideal of others from ages past to present. Whereas, the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to the print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory in children's services. Whereas, the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Fairview, Tennessee, hereby calling for play the week of October 15th through the 21st, 2017, as Friends of the Libraries Week in Fairview, Tennessee. And urge everybody to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better. So, thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you.
We just keep saying, you know, I know that the services and the time and people, people like these that are employees of the library, I just really appreciate it to do it without the volunteerism that y'all have. So, please join us at the Board of Commissioners so we can get our picture taken.
I agree. I agree.
Come on, man.
Sure, this is Anna F.
She's going to start busting my mind, yeah.
Yeah, that's your pleasure. I was just going to go. Just going to take off my glasses, that glare won't be there.
I have to get one more on that side. That'll be perfect. Yes. Thank you so much. Yeah, I appreciate you talking to me. I'll be happy. I'll be happy. Thank you so much. I'm a volunteer. Thank you so much. Yeah. 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 I appreciate you talking to me. I'll be happy. I'll be happy. Thank you so much. Yeah. I'm a volunteer. 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 Thank you so much. Yeah. I'm a volunteer.[1403.33] city taxes for the seven years that you've owned the property, right?
The one to the north.
Right.
Okay.
They're already in the city, right? And you said you've owned that property for seven years, right?
Twelve years.
Okay, twelve years. For those twelve years that you've owned that property, you said that the neighbor to the north of you has been in the city, right?
I believe that's so, yes, sir.
So, during those twelve years, that neighbor would have paid city taxes. And now, you could have done, you could have asked for that five acres to have been annexed twelve years ago, right? But you didn't. You've waited until now, when you think that you can get more money for the parcel, now you want to annex it into the city?
Possibility, yes, sir.
Okay. How is that fair to the neighbor that's to the north of you that's been paying city taxes for twelve years?
I don't see how it would reflect on him one way or the other.
Okay.
I'm really sure I understand how it would be fair or not fair. I mean, he's still paying city taxes regardless of what I do.
Right.
That shouldn't impact him at all, I wouldn't.
Yeah, he's paid city taxes for twelve years, right?
I don't think he's owned that, that long.
Well, whoever's owned it?
Yes, sir.
It's been in the city?
It's been in the city, right.
Okay.
They're paying city taxes. If you're in the city, you pay city taxes.
But you've waited until there's a, there's a chance for you to sell your land to somebody to now want it to be annexed?
Yes, sir.
And you think that if we annex it, that it's going to increase the value?
It could, yes, sir.
Well, that's what you're, that's what you think. I think you've said it twice now that you've been up here. Okay.
Well, there's no guarantee that it will.
Well, sure.
Not a guarantee, but, you know, just for the sake of it being in the city, possibly getting sewer taps, you know, having all the other things that come with being in the city, I think that'd be a plus if even my, my daughter buys some of the property or whatever, and she builds a house, and I'd like her to have those chances to.
Mr. Taylor, so you're wanting to increase the value of the property before you sell it to your daughter? Is that what you're saying?
Do I want to increase the value?
Yeah.
It's not so much I want to increase the value, it's just I want to have that access that the city offers.
Okay. Are you planning on selling the entire eight, eight acre tract or just the five acre tract?
If I sell anything, it'll just be the five.
Just the five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and I believe it was your brother, one of your neighbors, that came up here, and his concern is, right now, if it were sold, they could build a maximum of five houses, I think one acre, or is it less in the county right now? However, his concern is it coming to the city and the possibility of ten or more houses being built there. You see that that's a valid concern on his part? Do you see why that would be an issue?
Oh, yes, sir, I, I understand what he's, what he's thinking about. Of course, you know, they have to rezone it for that, and whether or not it's in the city or not, I think it's still house per acre, you know, regardless. As far as that goes, how many houses they could build, unless it's rezoned, you know, for that. And that area's been one house per acre forever, so I don't really see that changing.
My next question is, what's the benefit to the city?
Benefit of the city?
Mm-hmm.
I guess the revenue that it would generate.
Mr. Taylor, I can, I really cannot hear you.
I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Is that better?
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'm sorry. What was it? Do I need to repeat something?
Please.
I, I believe the question was, what's the benefit to the city? I think we've discussed at length in some previous meetings that the increase in property taxes don't actually pay for the cost of the services we have to provide, especially to an area that's at the very end of our service area. So, from, from the city's point of view, it, it, we would lose money. We wouldn't necessarily gain anything from annexing property here.
Hmm.
So, if that's the case, what's the benefit to the city of taking on that additional cost, provide additional services, whether that's fire, police, whatever service that may be?
Well, um, I don't know. I've, I've been here all my life, and I've pretty well done what I could for the city, so I was just kind of maybe asking the city to do something for me.
I, I find this very interesting. Not, not to you personally, I'm just saying, we spent some time talking, this is different, because, you know, we just didn't annex a property, because, you know, it was, the board just decided not to, I guess, but the, this is interesting, because when we talked before, it was, it's his property, this is different, we could consider this annexation, because you own, it's one piece of property, and you're just bringing the rest of it in the city. I think probably what the confusion and concern is now is, you know, why wouldn't we let you, in my mind, annex in if you won't? It would still have to come in and be, you know, rezoned. I mean, all they could do is one, you know, acre lots, so it's not given the opportunity. I think if somebody wants to come into the city, they already pay taxes on part of the land, they don't know that it, it, it is an issue. I understand your brother's concerned, and I even understand, and I asked the other day about was this included in that property before? And obviously, you know, it's not fair to the city for you to say, hey, I'm going to go and sell it to somebody that, and, you know, just to get it already annexed in. But the thing about it is, it's your property, you have the right to request an annexation, and so, I, you know, I think in this situation, we would normally not have a problem if other, if other property is surrounding it, and you're not the only, you know, if we're not making an island, is what I'm trying to say, then that would be different, so, yes.
I may, when this was on the agenda the last time, it was on the agenda to determine whether or not this process would move forward with the city attorney drafting the necessary paperwork and for us to have a public hearing. And I did take the position, and, yeah, this, this property was unique in that it is, I mean, all property is unique, quite frankly. It's, it's five acres, it's a parcel that does touch other property, but, you know, like most of the other commissioners here, I, I go out in the community and constituents come up, and they talk to you, and they say, hey, what's going on with this? I hear Mr. Taylor's wanting to annex his property over on Taylor Road. Well, this whole idea about this property tax is, it's not my idea, actually, it's an idea of a citizen. The citizen approached me and said, hey, Mr. Crutcher, why is it appropriate, and why is it okay for someone who has, who has owned this property, that has touched city property for as long as they've owned it, in this case, twelve years? And then, when they think they can make a profit, they then want to come into the city, because that increases the value of their property, but they hadn't paid property tax, city taxes, for that twelve years that they've owned the property. I think that's a legitimate argument, actually, and, and I, I had really never thought about it that way. But what we have now is, we have individuals that have owned tracts of land, your, in your case, five acres. We've got another one that's filling a donut hole that has been on the agenda, and I think is moving forward over here off of Snowmangram. But they've owned this property for a significant amount of time, and they've never wanted it into the city. But then all of the sudden, you know, wait a minute, we can make more money, some realtor or somebody has told them, you can get more money out of this if you have it annexed, let's annex it into the city. And, and I think the, the homeowners around there that have paid city taxes for a long time, I think that's a legitimate complaint, or a legitimate question at the very, at the very least, so that's why I was asking. And certainly, I reserve the right to change my position on anything. That's why we have discussion here. Until it's a final vote, it's not final.
Yes, sir.
So...
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
A couple of things I had not, what Vice Mayor Crutcher brought up, I had not thought about either. I think that's a valid point. I'm also a little concerned with the, the argument that I think my five acres will be worth more to sell if I annex it in, and then next we hear, well, I want to give it to my daughter. So, there's some confusion, I think, there. And then, one, it seems to me that last meeting, I believe you had said something about the lands just south of you, there was a small section of that that was, was annexed into the city, and that, is that not?
It's not, no, sir.
It's not, okay.
Thought it might have been, but it, it had been.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Rainey.
Mr. Taylor, I'm going to ask the, the, the same question I asked your brother. Has a developer approached you about buying your property?
I've had a couple of different folks talk to me about it, but nobody on paper or nothing.
Do you mind sharing who that was?
The real estate agent that I dealt with was David Cornwell.
But you don't know who the developer was?
He told me, but I just can't really remember his name. I can't remember, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any more discussion? We don't have a, we don't have a, a motion, so if anybody would like to give a motion. Okay, well, if I can't get a motion, I'm sorry, it dies.
All right. Thank you for your time and patience.
Thank you. Okay, that will bring us to old business B.
First and final reading of ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-two, an ordinance to amend a previously approved ordinance number six sixty-eight, mixed-use PUD and associated preliminary master development plan from thirty lots to forty-seven lots located on Highway one hundred, tax map forty-two, parcel forty-six point oh-one, consisting of eight point six eight acres, owned by Harold Cry.
Okay.
Do we have a representative here tonight?
Yes.
I think this was put back on the agenda so that we could get some clarification about the, whether or not it was a, I think, we were amending an existing PUD, or whether or not the PUD had expired. I think it's what, I don't know that we told that individual to come back to this meeting, but...
Yes, sir. I, I have that answer for you as well.
Okay.
Kristen went back and did some work, and I met with her, and we followed up on, part of the confusion was on, on our part, and specifically my part. I was under the impression when this item first came up, that it had previously been to the city council or the board of commissioners to be formally moved forward, and it had. The question then came up about the three-year window for it to take place. There's a caveat in the subdivision regulations, and I'm just going to walk you through to let you know where we are, so, and I'll kind of explain this in terms I can understand. The process is generally that you would have a preliminary plan, you would take that to the planning commission, the planning commission would consider that. If it was approved, and particularly if it's, it's a PUD, or in this case it is, then the, the planning commission would consider that. If they considered that plan to be favorable, and the, the rezoning to a PUD, whatever the designation would be, then they would simply vote in the affirmative and move that forward to the city council or the board of commissioners for ratification for the rezoning into the PUD, whatever the PUD designation would be. That, in fact, took place in two thousand and seven. The petitioner came to the planning commission, it passed the planning commission as, as a planned unit development, it went to the board of commissioners, and it was voted on by the board of commissioners to be accepted. So, at that time, the board of commissioners approved the PUD as presented. The, what we didn't know, or didn't understand at the time, looking back in this, is the, and this is the caveat that we'll have to work through in a meeting outside of this with the planning commission. The three-year window, and we've all read it, but I'll, I'll rehash this to, to read through. The three-year statute, so to speak, under section eight dash two oh three dash six, states, if no actual construction has begun in the planned unit development within three years from the date of the approval of the final development plan or section thereof, said approval shall lapse and be of no further effect. In this instance, or in the process, what happens is, the preliminary plan goes to the planning commission, the planning commission submits the preliminary plan and the, the rezoning to the city council or the board of commissioners. The board of commissioners approves that rezoning to the PUD, and that's where the activity of the board of commissioners ends. The next step would be, the developer would bring to the planning commission the final, the final development plan or final plat, and at that point, the three-year window would start. In this instance, for Audubon Cove, the final development plan was never presented to the planning commission. There's no sunset in the city code or the subdivision regulations for an event where the final plan is not presented to the planning commission. So, where you are is this. If the petitioner chose not to amend the PUD, he could simply move forward through the planning commission as the previous plan was done. He would just simply pick up with the process of the final plan, and that would, that would enforce or invoke the three years. In this case, that's not been done, so there are two options. He can move forward through the planning commission with the submission of a final plan, as was adopted in two thousand and seven, or he can come to the board of commissioners to amend the previously approved PUD, because in fact, it was previously approved. So, I'm not sure whether or not that answers your question, but, but the difficulty is the fact of the, the simple window that the final preliminary plan or final plat was never submitted to the planning commission, therefore, the three years never picked up. So, it's as if we've either rewound the clock ten years, or fast-forwarded the clock ten years, whichever way you prefer to view it.
Well, I, I mean, that answers the question that I had. It's concerning to me that that's how it is, because I think that for them to just, and I think I mentioned this to the last meeting, I had always been under the impression that once the board of commissioners approved the, the plat and the zoning, that whatever the developer had proposed, that was final. I mean, in other words, when it went back to the, to the planning commission, the only thing that the planning commission did, I guess, was deal with, did it meet with, you know, the requirements in terms of what was being built, in terms of materials, or setbacks, or, or whatever. I don't know. I mean, maybe, maybe that's all part of what we do as well. But nonetheless, it seems, it's concerning to me that it can be approved, it's final from a BOC standpoint, but then there's this other step that takes place at the planning commission, and that step can essentially not happen for a significant period of time in perpetuity. And then they come back, and everything has changed about how we operate. Maybe we don't even have that zoning classification anymore. Maybe we, you know, the codes have completely changed, building-wise, and then now they can just go and start building, essentially.
Sure.
I mean, that's, that's concerning. I mean, I...
There's clearly, if you, for, for everything that you've just mentioned, there's clearly some work to be done to close that loop. There's no doubt about that. And it's a relatively simple fix. It'll take a few meetings and some collaboration between the BOC and the planning commission, but it, something can be overcome, but it's certainly a hazardous window.
So, essentially, we can, we can do nothing, and the developer can pick up and go back to the planning commission and build the thirty, the thirty lots, build on the thirty lots?
Yes, sir.
Or we can amend the PUD?
Yes, sir. And again, those are general terms, but that's just an explanation for me more so than you, for...
So, he would use the building codes current in two thousand and seven, not what we may have now that's changed?
No, ma'am. Building codes are not retroactive, whatever, that's a different set of codes. The building codes are actually what takes place today. It's simply just the zoning that was in, you don't, everything's not rewound. It's just, just that. Everything else has to be to standards as of, as, as today.
Vice Mayor Crutcher, I was, you know, I was listening to the, to the dilemma, and it's, you know, and I'm, maybe I'm thinking out loud on this, which is dangerous, but I was talking to the planning, city planner about it. It seems to me that wouldn't the planning commission, he would, it still has to, even after, if there's no action for, for several years, like here, it would still have to go back before the planning commission. And the planning commission's not obligated to approve it. And it seems to me that the planning commission could go, whoa, whoa, wait a minute. You took five years to do anything, and now you're coming back to us, we're not approving this. I don't think that, I don't know that there's a requirement. It seems like there's some type of, that would be the safety valve.
Okay.
Till we close the loop, loophole.
Sure. The, the planning commission could simply just deny. He could go back and present the final plan, the planning commission would just simply say no or take no action. Now, obviously, that's dependent on the planning commission.
Right.
And their, and their, their preference, but certainly that can be done. The planning commission could simply just deny the final plan.
Right. That's not an optimal situation, but...
But for purposes of the BOC, going forward, Commissioner Crutcher, you're correct. You, your, your duty in this will be either to approve the amended PUD in some form or fashion, or simply take no action, and the, the existing PUD would be the, the PUD of record.
And if I'm not mistaken, we had several questions last meeting that he didn't know the answers to, and I think that he was going to come back with answers. I think that was part of this, too.
And, and they are willing to come back. He's been working with his engineer to try and get some of the same answers. He came in on the, on the second half of this project, as, as in everyone else, and he's working with his engineer to get, try to get some of those answers, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily take his absence tonight as a non-interest. I think he's working to try and get you the same information that he'd like to have himself, if that helps.
Well, do we defer then until he can come back and invite him back, or if, do we make him come back if it's going to be denied anyway? Because he was here, and if, if, my question is, you know, if you have those answers, would that make a difference, or we want to just defer it?
I, I don't know that the questions that I have for him, if I had the answers, is going to make much of a difference. I mean, one of the questions I had asked is, okay, we don't really have that based on the current moratorium, and I realize this is amendment, so it won't fall, the moratorium won't affect that, and I, and I understand that, but one of the questions I had is, being that we are not approving PUDs under our current moratorium that are more dense than a, than a R-20, then is, is it a possibility for them to configure this so that it actually has that zoning designation, an R-20? How many units would he lose? But it, it kind of sounded like in conversations that I had with him, you know, after the meeting, that that probably was cost prohibitive for them. So, if it was something that either we, we was going to approve it, or we weren't, as is, is kind of how I took it.
Yes, sir. I, I, the conversation's not only speaks certainly for him, but I think ultimately on paper, there would be no difference to them between making the current proposal, R-20, or staying with the existing R-15, when you get, the R-15 PUD, when you get down to the, the end number.
Well, this one's actually, this one actually is, it's an eight.
Yes, sir.
So, it's even smaller.
Now, just for, I mean, it, it has taps, water taps, there's no, so it was already approved with certain taps, so I guess it comes down to it is whether or not the board wants to, you know, if it comes in front of us to make the changes and approve the PUD, or if, if it, we don't, then it goes back and he can still build. He just has to do his original plan? Is that what I got from your conversation?
I'm sorry, I was reading this. Was, is that a question for me?
Well, I was just clarifying with Mr. Collins, that's what...
I think the answer is yes, and it...
If, if the BOC chooses to take no action on this, then the existing PUD approved is still in play, and they could move forward in that. And they, they have, we have confirmed that they have purchased already, not just been approved for the sewer access, but purchased all thirty services.
But then, if he, if he goes with the original and goes back to the planning commission, the planning commission can still deny that, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
But deny, deny, at that point, what would they have the right to deny it based on? I mean, as long as he was coming and he was meeting all of the, all of the codes, under what theory could they deny it? I mean, it's been rezoned, it's been, it's been designated a PUD, and, and from my understanding, when it comes in, it's, it, and again, I'm, I'm a little bit mixed up on this, because I've heard a lot of different versions of what happens when you're actually approving a PUD. The PUD becomes, the zoning becomes part of the plat, or the plat becomes part of the zoning. I, I don't know which one it is, but one or the other. So, if it goes back from here to the planning commission, and they come in and they present their final plan, or whatever you referred to it as earlier, that would actually start that three-year window?
Yes, sir.
And they have met with all of the, the requirements by the city engineer, by, by our current codes, for what, for what reason could the planning commission deny it?
If they've met those, and they'll have to go some back through those processes, if they've met those, and, and they met them in the current standards, and yes, sir, they would, they would move forward.
All right.
Question for the city planner, and I can't tell from looking at this, how much improved...
Question for the city planner, and I can't tell from looking at this. How much improved open space is there, or is there any?
Uh, there's not, not a ton. Um, there's a little gazebo area and a walking trail. It, yeah, there's, there's not a-
Is there a, is there a sufficient amount?
Technically, yes, but as far as the discussion we've had recently about what constitutes an, an appropriate amenity, you know, clubhouse versus, uh, a gazebo, it's, it's up to, you know, it's up, it's up to interpretation as to what's considered a quality amenity. But they did, um, I mean, they did add something.
If we're not happy with the amenity that they've provided as far as a upgraded open space, but we approve it as is, does the Planning Commission then have the ability to say, no, it needs to be more, or are we, they stuck with whatever's here?
No, it's stuck with whatever the board, um, decides. In the minutes that I have from the last meeting that the Planning Commission considered this amendment, there was discussion about five different types of amenities, usable, improved usable amenities. Uh, the tot lot, which is what they went with, or the gazebo, uh, neighborhood park, recreational building, pedestrian open space system, trail system, or specialized facilities such as golf course, tennis courts, swimming pools.
I don't see a golf course, so we don't get that. I just can't tell from either one of these pictures, so.
It's very small.
Yes, thank you.
Well, the thing, the thing that's interesting about this, this project, it's a little different than some of the others that have, that have come up, is that this, this is kind of a, there, there's no real residential around that area. I mean, it's, it's, it's kind of, it would be kind of isolated. Right there at the beginning of the four lanes is that, that's where it's going in, right? So you'd have the old city hall that would sit to one side of that, and the spot that was proposed for the ACE hardware. And then there's really nothing between that side and, except the church that's on down the highway. Is that right?
Yeah, it's the same discussion we've had about previous, uh, proposed developments at the end of the city limits. It's basically at the end.
Yeah. So I guess the question really for this board, and this is, I mean, is do we want them to build the thirty that they've already been approved for? Or are we okay with them adding an additional seventeen lots? Is that right? I mean, that's, that's how many they're adding, uh, because if, based off of, of what Mr. Collins said tonight, they could come to the Planning Commission that the, the next time they can get on the agenda, and then they can start, if they get approval, they can start pulling permits and doing whatever they need to do to build this. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer a motion to approve, subject to the recommendations of the Planning Commission that were included, um, with our packet. Some of those things might have already been changed, but just for the record, I wanna recite what the changes actually were. Approved contingent upon the adding of street trees, some type of improved usable amenity of their choosing of the five they discussed. And Ms. Costanza discussed those earlier, so I won't read them, but I think we all know what they are. Open space system, trail system, tot lot, gazebo. And I think those are the only changes that the, that the Planning Commission recommended. I will note that it appears that it was unanimous vote at the Planning Commission to do this, so that's my motion.
Okay, we have a first.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Any more discussion? Okay, if you will, um, do a roll call vote, Ms. Johnson.
Crutcher?
Aye.
Burks?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
All in favor?
Okay, eleven C. The ADA trail to Joe N's classroom, and that will be Vice Mayor Crutcher.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that I had on the agenda last time, but I wanted to defer it until Mr. Collins was back so that we could have a meaningful discussion about it. This is a, this is a project that has been on the agenda for the Park Commission as long as I've been on the Board of Commissioners, and maybe even beyond that. Um, and it's something that has, I think, has been started, the process, but we've just, it, it's not done. So I'm just trying to get an update. I know there was some discussion at, at not the past Park Commission meeting or Board meeting, but the, the one previous to that, that there may have been an increase in engineering fees or some additional costs that had not been approved. And I'm trying to figure out what that is so that we can move this project along.
Yes, sir. I'll give you an update as, as I have it. There have been, I think, historically several of these discussions that came up about this. Here, here's kind of where we are. We, I spoke with our city engineer on this a few weeks ago to get an idea. We had someone come out and give a, a rough estimate for just simply installing a sidewalk, and that cost was around $10,000. I gave that information to the city engineer, and he, he was concerned that the cost would be much more closer to $50,000 because obviously there are ADA requirements and work to be done, um, and they can prepare those documents and move forward if we ask them to do so. Um, I think once we do that, then that project, if it's approved by the board to install, would not be a lengthy project. I can tell you tonight that we do have in the budget currently approved, a total of sixty, of $70,000 allocated for park improvements. So there would not have to be any adjustment to your budget if you wanted to facilitate or use those funds for this project regardless of the cost. So it's a, if it's a pleasure of the board, I can just simply ask the city engineer to move forward with designing the project, and his fees for that would simply be a part of, of the budgetary process to move forward. Um, he's willing to do that. He just needs a direction from us to move forward, and, and we can give that notification tomorrow, so.
So there's been some work done preliminarily, but it's just never gotten to the point of there to be any money approved to do it?
Yes, sir, that's correct. I, I think there have been several discussions where, in years past, decades past maybe, that the project was approved, but that's as far as it got. We now have money available. I will tell you tonight also, Commissioner Crutcher, members of the board, in addition to your $70,000 that's budgeted for this year, um, in your currently approved budget after, after all expenditures, you are expecting a year-end balance in your Bowie Park Fund of $105,000. So in addition to the seventy, you do have additional monies available should there be some other project to move forward. So if it's your pleasure, we'll simply move forward with the engineer and have him start the design work.
Yeah, I'd like, I would like to do that. I don't know that we need to offer a motion to do that, but I'd like to do that and then bring that back, um, so that we can actually approve the, the money to get that going.
Yes, sir, I'd be glad to.
Well, and just for clarity, um, I thought originally there was the board already approved for money to be sent prior to, you know, but there was a question of whether it was enough money, so do we need to allocate the amount or do up to? Or have you read that motion to see what we approved and what the difference is?
Um, I've, I've not read it. I don't know where we, where we were. I can tell you that that would have been a past year budget. So regardless of where you were then, you're still gonna need to approve this expenditure because the total project is gonna be above twenty, uh, above $10,000. So regardless of what resolution was done in the past, this is gonna need to be brought back. The engineering fees will be, simply be less than $10,000. It's already approved here. So I would simply move forward with the engineering fees, and then the total construction cost I would bring back to you for approval as, as a purchase order approval for the project itself.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, um, if there's no need to make any other motions, we'll move, um, forward. Okay, that will bring us to new business, twelve A. Review agency funding requests that could be funded through school facility tax.
Mayor, I, thank you. I had asked that that be put on this agenda at the last meeting. Um, as everyone knows, there was, we reviewed the, the request for agency funding at the last meeting and was able to, um, use that money and provide that money to, I think, four or five nonprofits, uh, is what we did. And as part of some of the requests, there were three specifically that, that Mr. Collins felt like, and they emailed us, could be potentially funded through the school facilities tax. Uh, one was the, the ban request, and I don't have that number.
I have those for you. If I can hand those out, we'll-
I'm gonna let you take over.
Mayor, members of the commission, if I may, what you have before you on the first page is just simply a recap of the school facilities fund dollars available. Um, we, we estimated our beginning balance to be $600,000 each year. We estimated a revenue of $135,000. Our actual beginning balance was $596,600. Our year-to-date revenue is $44,000. After reviewing this, it appears that our year-to, our revenue is gonna be closer to 145 than 135. So we're confident in, in the budget and numbers where we are. The year-to-date expenditures, as you move down, the Fairview High School and Middle School support, the $22,500 previously approved, has come out of those dollars. We have, we haven't gotten all our final bills in, but we have little less than $10,000 in expenses on the high school traffic plan for improvements we had to make. Signage, um, other parking, striping to the school. If you take our beginning balance and our revenue, less those, that expenditure and those encumbrances, you have an available balance of $608,340 projected. The proposed expenditures for, for the year, $300,000 was for the Williamson County, um, half-cent sales tax agreement, where we would refund that to the county if in fact that passes. $200,000 for the Fairview High School press box was, was budgeted and discussed. That leaves a proposed available balance of $108,340. That, if you see the, the bottom paragraph, that $108,340 does not include the approximate $12,000 in revenue each month that the fund will take in until some discussion or decision is made on the half-cent sales tax. So the $108,000 today will be $120,000 approximately next month. That's what you have available to you unencumbered in that fund. The next three pages are the, the next page is simply the information that I sent out to you that Commissioner Crutcher mentioned regarding the funding of the agencies. The Fairview High School, um, men's basketball request of $6,400 clearly would apply to the funding from the school facilities if, if you chose to do so. The, um, JTD or JTG or the jobs for Tennessee graduates, $1,700 would apply with one caveat. They stated that that would be used to provide funding for a student. Uh, I would simply request that if that funding goes to them, that that, those $1,700 be spread across all applicable students, anyone who's eligible, so that not one individual is being funded, but the funding is occluded equally among all qualified candidates. And then the next page, the Fairview High School request of $9,850 would also be an eligible expense. Uh, those, those total roughly $18,000. So if you were to offer a resolution to fund those three items from the school facilities fund, that would give you an approximate balance today of $90,000 moving forward unencumbered. I hope that answers the question, but that's where we were. There was one additional question about funding the Fairview Soccer Association through there. I've, I've looked back in research, and I don't find any way that that would be an, an applicable use of those dollars as a part of that. So my suggestion would be, um, if you wanted to consider moving forward with those three, they would be eligible, but those would be your three only eligible.
Well, and just to comment to your comment with that, if it originally, just like the library and everything before they'd made the changes, we could go in front of the board and request it. We use school facilities for, you know, build in addition to the library. I think it's due to the changes that was made, you know, last year that that would come. But if it was especially, um, if it was something the kids were using, like a practice field or something like that the school used, I didn't know if that would fall in, and even if there had to be clarity, we could go to the, um, county commission meeting like we did for the library and just ask that, get permission to use the fund for that. Didn't know if that was still a possibility.
My only concern, Mayor, with that would be, one, the, the Fairview Soccer Association is a separate entity from anything educational, just like the, the, um, Football Association that asked for some funding. It's a separate one. So I was, I was comparing those two as whether or not they'll qualify for the educational dollars. The second is, I referenced in that notification that the city had put forth $25,000 in last year's budget for the baseball complex, baseball complex, and $25,000 in this year's budget for the baseball complex. Those have been exhausted, which in theory would leave a $25,000, um, hole of money available that you can move forward. And this, in my estimation, from what the Soccer Association asked for, which were improvements, improvements to the field, is actually a field owned by the Williamson County Recreation Authority. So if I were to move forward with the soccer request, I would move forward as a general fund, funding of those dollars with the same agreement or, or, um, some sort of discussion with the Williamson County Recreation to ensure that those dollars improve the field as we request, just like the baseball complex, is how I arrived at that.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I had talked to Mr. Varden with the, the Fairview Soccer Association. He had called about the funding request last week, and I had explained, uh, what Mr. Collins just said, uh, to him, that, that there would be the potential for some money next fiscal year. And I know people don't like to hear next, wait till next year, but, but there would be some money there that was used this year, uh, and given to, um, Williamson County Parks and Rec for the baseball field. And I agree that the money, any money given would have to be channeled through, or should be, channeled through Williamson County Parks and Rec to make improvements to their property for the Soccer Association versus being given to the Soccer Association. The Titans face a little bit of a difficulty in that they don't actually have any property that the county owns or the city owns to be improved. Uh, it would be, their request would be funding private property improvements, either that were owned by the Lions Club or owned by someone else at this point. And there may be some discussion about that in the future, and I hope there is because they really have, like I said last meeting, that particular group has, has really gotten a bad deal. They don't, they don't really have a home. They're practicing on, um, baseball fields and they're playing on the high school field, you know? So, uh, it'd be nice to see something from them in the future, but I just don't think we can have that discussion now. The, um, I would like to offer a motion that we fund these three requests, that we, uh, in the amount of $17,950, that that money be payable to Fairview High School. That Fairview High School then be directed to use that money as follows. That $9,850 would be provided to the Fairview High School band. That $6,400 would be provided to the Fairview High School men's basketball team to fund their request. And that $1,700 would be provided for jobs for Tennessee graduates. However, that $1,700 would be divided pro rata based on however many students were attending that leadership academy.
Yes.
Just for clarify-
Does anybody want a second and then get a discussion, or?
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Part of the call.
Gotcha. This may be a silly question, but Fairview, when it says Fairview High School men's basketball team, we're talking about the students, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then my second question to that is, um, I noticed here that in, in city manager's comments, he said that this request was actually not submitted by the school or the coach. So I'm assuming probably a parent or something like that. And your recommendation to this board was actually to defer this pending that the request actually come from the school. Has that happened?
I have not, I have not seen that request, nor have heard them deny that request either.
Okay, 'cause I, I, I kind of agree with some of the things that you're, you're talking about. I feel like some of these costs for that particular thing are a little excessive. I, I would just like to see that, I'm not saying I would deny that, I'm just saying I'd like to see that coming from the school as opposed to a parent.
Understood. I, we can do that up to that amount and have the school submit us an actual cost if it would, however you prefer to move forward.
Okay, yes, Com- Okay, yes, Commissioner.
Hello, Mayor. One thought I have in this is, this is nice that we could possibly do this for the men's basketball team. Does the women's basketball team need uniforms as well? Again, this didn't come from the school's request. It came from, I think it was one of the booster groups. So, I would ask that we defer this item, get an actual proposal from the school to see what uniforms they think they need, as far as from the coach, and ask if the women's team also needs new uniforms as well in that process.
Um, yes, Vice Mayor.
I'm I'm not opposed to, obviously, if the if the women's team needs new uniforms. I, this was just the only request we had, but i- if they need new uniforms, then that's that's fine, we can look at that as well. I mean, what I do know is, is that we have 108,340 that's that's sitting in this fund that is gonna go away based off of our agreement contingent upon what happens with the half-cent sales tax. It's gonna go away for 10 years. So, this money may not be available very, very much longer to use. So, what I, that's why my motion was, is to pay this money to Fairview High School to be used for the specific, specific, if I can get it out, purposes, instead of to the individual groups. And then, you know, I mean, obviously, I sort of earmarked it for those purposes, but to those groups. But I don't, I mean, we can change the, how it's worded or to accomplish the same purpose. I mean.
You could, you could divide that amount of money between the basketball teams for all that, for basketball equipment and whatever, let let the two coaches decide what their needs are based on that budget, if that's a request. Again, they haven't made a request, the women's basketball certainly understand that.
Well, I I have a fear that we're, we've been doing stuff, special interest per group, kinda, you know, and they all have needs, and we gave everybody opportunity. So, just because the boys, the girls may got uniforms last year, I don't know. I kinda wish with some of the school funding that we would have sent, if we were gonna be giving out funding, they were all going for this nonprofit funding. That's probably why that came through, and I don't know, we would have to find the answer to that. But they probably wanted a piece of that pie, and so they had the parent group come ask for it. So, I I think, I think there's gonna be other stuff that comes up through the year that, you know, if they realize we're giving out money. But at like, you know, if we're talking fairness, we keep giving to the high school. And, you know, there's elementary, two elementary schools that I'm sure if they thought that there was funds available that had things that they could use. So, I think right now, we're looking at the request in front of us, and I think it would be easy if we did wanna submit something to the principals or, and have an opportunity of letting some of these other schools submit.
Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll tell you what I'm willing to do right now to just, we can ease this process forever until we get that money back 10 years from now, if that happens. We can take the the balance of that money that's left and divide it between the four schools for all I care, then it's depleted. They all, they all get, they all get an equal share of it. That's what we have left instead of, instead, and then we don't have to have to have people come and make these requests and us try to pick which one deserves it or doesn't deserve it. We send it to the schools, that's what it was intended for, and they can use it as they, as they see fit.
Do you mean all of it, including what we just tried to allocate tonight back into the pot?
We can put it all into one pot, take the 108,340 and divide it and send it to the,
Four schools.
Four schools.
Would we need to look at the jobs for Tennessee graduates separately? 'Cause I don't know if that's through the, is it through one of the actual schools? Okay.
Send it to the schools. So, I withdraw my original motion.
And I'll withdraw my second.
Now, I'll make a motion that we take the 108,340 that we have in the school facilities fund, we divide it equally between the four schools.
Okay, and would, does somebody wanna second that before I?
Okay, I'll second so we can discuss it.
Okay, so, do we want to say, due to these requests, we've determined, 'cause then the principal's vision of where the money is gonna be spent is different than a parent group necessarily?
I think the principals are gonna know what their schools need much more. I know the transitions class at Fairview High needs equipment, and, you know, that's, the county cannot do that. So, I think the principals would know more what their schools need than.
So, yeah, I agree, but I'm saying, are we gonna eliminate, tell these groups, you just need to go to your principal and see if they'll give you the funding? Yes.
Madam Mayor, one question before we commit all of those funds. We had previously committed to, I think, 10,000 a year to the two elementary schools to provide free reading program, pre-K startup program of some sort.
Commissioner, those were already fully funded.
Okay, we fully funded those, I just wanted, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
Yes, sir, they were funded in advance. The only question I would, and I understand the motion in the second, is simply to divide the 108,000 between the schools and and distribute to them, and that's fine. My, and I think that's, that's easy. My question to you is, we're gonna get some residual dollars coming in, so to prevent a next discussion from the same thing, would it be appropriate to consider that any additional dollars we have come in just simply be divided? In other words, next month, we get $12,000. Just simply receive that money, divide it equally, $3,000 each at school, and just remit that until such time as those funds don't return?
Fine by me. I, I, I mean, I just think that it's hard for us, we have these individuals that come and make these requests, and I don't disagree with the mayor. I know the other schools have issues, have needs too, and it's, instead of us having to determine, okay, which one of these groups do we pick? Send it out and let the principals, let them ask for funding from their principals.
Understood.
Now, I, I, your question is a fair question, and I would say yes, but it's so hard for a saver to sit here and say, let's dump it and act like there's never gonna be an option 'cause it's the last funds we have. But, so, we'll get 3,000 a month for the next.
Right now, it's running closer to 12, let's, let's say it's 12,000 a month, which is easily divisible by the four schools. So, if we're, if we're exhausting those, because if we weren't getting any more dollars, then the 108 would just simply be it, and it would go away. So, given the fact that you're zeroing that dollar out, so to speak, then the request would be, would you just simply continue that until such time as Williamson County passes its, passes its funding? If not, then you just retain those funds.
You know, I would just like to request, we consider not just at the end of the budget year, if there's something, 'cause we just, you never know, something may come up, that one group or school may need something more, that we hold on to those monthly payments, and at the end of the year, we can make, divide it up between them if there isn't that special project that may occur.
Understood. Currently, the motion is to divide the 108 by four, distribute it to the schools. My question was just, do you want to add that? If no one to add it, there'd be no other action, you simply call the role on the matter you have before you.
Okay, any other discussion?
And call a vote.
Crutcher?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Burks?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
All in favor?
Thank you. Twelve B, speed limit on Highway 96 and 100.
Yes, Mayor, members of the commission, just a quick update. We talked two meetings ago about the posting of the speed limits on Highway 96 and 100, and the city's ability to, to make those, those assessments or sign those speed limits. I reported to you back last time that the state has reported us that, yes, we can make those, those speed limits. We've gone out and audited all of the streets in the city of Fairview physically to monitor the speed limits that are currently posted and to make some adjustment to those. And the, the purpose of that was, if we're going to amend the current ordinance, which includes speed limits generally, we wanted to have the ordinance include speed limits in certain areas, major collectors, Highway 96, Highway 100, specific locations, and the school zones. The state has confirmed that we can move forward also with some, some restriction that we can, we can easily adapt to regarding the school zones. One thing that we did not have currently in the, in the, in the ordinance were the, the school zones that are on Cumberland, Cumberland Drive and Old Franklin. We're, we're gonna include those in that as well. We'll bring that ordinance back to you, and the ordinance will actually state the speeds for all the locations on Highway 100, all the locations on Highway 96, all of the school zones, all of the major collectors, and all the residential streets. That will be a lengthy ordinance, but it will cover all of those items for you. I'll get a draft out to you before the next meeting, obviously, but I just want you to know, we have inventoried those, we do have those speeds documented, and we'll get that back out to you for your consideration globally, citywide, as far as the speed limits are concerned. No issue with where we are now, but it is just a clarification of the current ordinance. But it, it has taken some time and work, we do have it substantially complete.
Okay. New business C, city cell phones policy.
Thank you, Mayor. This has come up in discussion before. Some of the members of the Board of Commissioners have a city-provided cellphone so that we can take calls from many of the local citizens, as well as have a location where all our emails come to, and actually, it's the only place I can check my city email. I think it's highly advisable if all the members are using this. I absolutely hate having to carry two cellphones. It is a pain to have to keep up with more than just one. However, I think it would be to our advantage, in the case of a lawsuit or a open records request, that we're able to just hand this over. It could be easily downloaded, all the information's there, there's not really a question of, did you accidentally down, you know, something happened to your personal phone and lost that information? It's all here, it's easy to do, and it just kinda makes sense to me, and I just wanted to bring that up for discussion.
Well, I know that Mr. Collins sent us an email about that. Did you have any thoughts that you thought it?
We've been back and forth, obviously, there's some, some legal matters in one case where that came up about the, the maintenance of those records. We're in the process of improving the city's email server, so we can have that, that is a little bit longer process than we want. Right now, it's by machine. So, from a records-keeping standpoint, and the ability to simply comply with a records- request and know those, absolutely, it is the easier way to go. However, that's gonna take an agreement by the board that everyone agrees to do that thing. I understand Commissioner Burks, the, the two phones, but it, it would serve a purpose if, if you simply had that item to turn over. There's no requirement under the law that if they ask for documents, that you have to turn over the actual device. The request is for the documents or information, not the device that they're contained on or in. However, the ability to simply say, here is this device, you're welcome to everything that's on it, certainly cleanses the process a little bit as far as what information is available to whom and when.
Well, I mean, I, unless something's changed, you have your personal phone, right? I mean, would that be the same, were any city employees that we need to be concerned with, or do they all have their own city phones?
No, if, some have city-issued phones. I, I still do have mine, I will tell you that I'm going to a city-issued phone as well and will remove that, so it will be all of us who are involved at that level.
Yes.
And that, that, one of the first things that I did when I got elected was, I got a separate phone, and I'm like, Derek, I don't like keeping two phones. But I did go get a separate phone, it has all my emails on it, any city calls that I may get, and for that very reason, just so that, 'cause there was other business items that were on my phone that I did not wanna have to go through and read that confidential information that may or may not be on there. So, I, I'm all for it, whether it's a city-issue phone or whether each individual commissioner goes out and gets their own phone. Either way, I just think there needs to be some separation between the two.
I've done it both ways, I had a city phone, then I, I didn't have one, and I did, and I didn't. It's just a convenience thing, and then why cost the burden of the city extra money? So, that was for me not why I went back, not having one. I do think if you're looking at that way, we need to consider our own private devices too, 'cause those are, anytime I go home and on my computer, open my email, wouldn't it be the same concerns? And so, just while we're talking about legal concerns or potential, is it not the same?
I mean, again, the request is not for the specific machine or item that the information is on, it's the information itself. If that were a concern, and obviously, I can see where it would be, I simply would just remove the email account from any personal device I have and just use my, my city-issued device to retrieve those, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Well, I, I just have a difficult time responding to an email on a cellphone. And so, and I don't, I would have to use my own personal email to log in to the city, even then I'm doing the same thing, basically, using my own personal device, and then you have to worry about, you know, what's on there. I mean, I'm not, I'm just thinking out loud off of what y'all are saying, then, you know, if we're doing it for, you know, to protect the city and let that information, you know, reside within the city for open records requests, then, I don't know.
And we, we, I'm sorry, I mean, we.
I was just gonna say, I'm sorry, in response to that, my, my city email not only goes to that particular separate phone, but also goes to an Outlook account. However, anything that I do on that Outlook account also is, is synced to that phone as well. So, any emails that I receive, if I wanna respond to it on this computer, I can still respond to it, but it's still gonna show up on that phone as well. So, when they're, like you're saying, they're only asking for the actual emails, I can still just hand them that phone, and I don't have to hand them this laptop for that.
Well, we've actually had cases where they wanted both potential year, I've been surveyed on what computers I own and what devices I have in my house, and what would I receive or check emails, and so I'm just bringing up the point. Yes.
And Mayor, it makes it easier if you say, well, this device is the only thing I get city emails on. Actually, there's, I'm sure there's a way, but I haven't been told how to do it, how to check it anywhere else. So, if there becomes a question of what devices, I can say, well, this is the only thing that gets emails from the city. It's just that simple. But the other issue is some personal email, and that's probably something else we should look at for city business, we should probably be using our city email accounts instead of any personal accounts, just because Gmail, some of these other, it, some of them will delete stuff after it gets so old, whereas these can be set up to actually retain that information. I've got every email I've ever received on this phone. Only thing that's been deleted is a few junk mail items, but everything else is there, and it's easy just to turn it over and not accidentally delete it.
Commissioner Burks, have you, is that, have you, is your question a motion?
It was to discuss and get the opinion of the board.
There's no motion on the floor. Does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second.
Okay, and what is your motion?
It's, it's almost, you know, it's, it's time to go.
I'd make a motion that the Board of Commissioner members, if not already, either be, use a separate phone or be provided a city phone.
be, use a separate phone or be provided a city phone for the purposes of emails and city phone calls.
You can second it now.
Second. Okay, and yes?
Did, did your motion, and I may have missed it, did it also say that we're only going to use city email?
I'll accept that amendment.
Well, if, you can't just accept amendment, he would have to amend the motion, he'd have to get a second, so why don't you just restate? We can do that. Would you like to amend the motion?
I would.
Okay.
To include that we only use city email.
Second.
Okay. Can he second the first motion, and he had the first motion, and he just seconded amended? Is that...
Yes.
Okay, sure. Okay, so, and we're just going to forget, see, I, the fact, we have a first and second, I'm going to discuss it, and we're going to forget the fact that I'm telling you, requiring me to only have a cellphone, and sometimes when I have to have a big response to a citizen, it's hard for me to do, so we may want to put back on the agenda for next time of talking about computer devices. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Burks?
Aye.
Lucas?
Aye.
Rainey?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Crutcher?
Aye.
Okay. And, city managers, items for discussion.
Mayor, I have four for you tonight, one just, I had three until that last item. We, we've talked at the city about installing a workstation for elected officials here at City Hall, so if you have some item, a computer, something you need to do, an email, some document you want to prepare, some other thing, then you would have a workstation, all the elected officials would have a, a workstation available at City Hall that you come in and do that, if that was your choosing to do, to prevent part of the matter that you discussed. So we will have that available if someone wanted to come in and use that for whatever city business they had. Secondly, tonight, there was some discussion at the last meeting, I was not here, I was at training, but there was a gentleman who presented to the board regarding an event where they may have some special needs or some other notification that needed to be on file with dispatch for whatever their, their individual situation was, so that they would be able to note that for our first responders if they were to come about. We've worked with the Sheriff's Department on that, I spent a good meal of time, good bit of time with them on that today. They do have a, an ability to provide that, they also guard it somewhat because there are obviously reasons that you need to be careful with that. What they provided me today was with the email for the contact person who handles that in dispatch, he's actually in charge of the dispatch, and that's the procedure they use, where if they have a citizen to have a specific request, that they submit it in that manner, in that manner, and they load that in dispatch. So we are not, we're not producing that, but the actual citizen with the concern is. I will read you that email address, we will also post it on our city's website so that anyone would have access to that, so they could see if they needed to. The email address for someone to, to submit a specific need is steven, spelled S-T-E-P-H-E-N, dot M, steven dot M, at Williamson-tn.org. Again, we'll put that on the city's website, but that is the person in charge of those requests to dispatch for the Williamson County Sheriff's Department. We'll make sure that's available, and if there's a question or concern, they can simply email that question or concern to that person in dispatch, and they will be the person to install whatever concern they have and then report back to them that it is in fact installed. And if there is some issue specific to our dispatch, our first responders would be notified in the appropriate manner. So I hope that answers that question, but that's what they provided to us to move forward. The next item I have for you and I, I'll, I have a handout for this regarding the firetruck, I'm going to hand this out just, just briefly. Mayor, members of the commission, I understand that at the last meeting, Mayor Carroll had some questions about the financing of the firetruck or how that would be done and some specifics to that. What I've prepared for you tonight is a 10-year lease purchase amortization. They would both effectively be the same, but you'll see that I've drafted, the loan amount is $456,000. The agreement purchase, or the purchase, the purchase of the firetruck is $426,000, but there was some question about equipment that would not be legacy equipment that may need to be included on the firetruck. I budgeted that at 30, that's an approximate number as we get in, but if we did $456,000 at an interest rate of 3.5%, which is likely a little high, the period you have there is months, that's actually years. The payments over 10 years will be $54,830 at, at the 3.5% for the $456,000. I budgeted those out, beginning with payments of August 1st, 2018, would be in next year's budget, one month into next year's budget. And you'll see, based on this amortization, what your principal and interest payments would be over those 10-year lease payments until it zeroes out in 2017, or actually 2027, where it actually comes out to zero for you to get your last payment. So that's just your basic straight amortization for what the payments would be, principal and interest for each of those years, depending on your finances. The bottom paragraph, and I'll read this to you, says the funding source will, will be either a 10-year lease purchase or a 10-year straight finance, depending on the interest rate and terms. All banking institutions with branches located in the city of Fairview will be invited to bid. Funding will be secured in the first quarter of calendar 2018, once all vehicle and related equipment costs have been clearly identified. Again, we don't expect it to be above 456, but that's the process that we will move forward. This is your amortization, that's the process we will move forward to secure funding and the anticipated annual amount. I'd be glad to ask any additional questions, but this is the process we would follow. Thank you, and I have one more handout for you as well. Mayor, members of the commission, the last item I have for you tonight is a follow-up on a discussion regarding vehicles owned by the city and the city's fleet. This item you have in front of you is the inventory as of today. You may recall, or some of you may recall, that last year, on dated October 6th, you received a very similar spreadsheet to this that included all of the vehicles that we have. Since that time, we have disposed of 17 vehicles in the city's fleet and replaced them with two, for a total reduction of 15 vehicles in the city's fleet over the last 12 months exactly. What you have before you is the fleet, the department that includes, where it's assigned, and the purchase or the fund that purchased the vehicle. All of these are going to be general fund. You have two in this, in the second page that were not general fund, the Bowie Fund or Park Fund paid for a vehicle, and the State Street Aid paid for a vehicle. Those are relatively simple and straightforward. What will cause us some problem moving forward with our vehicle replacement plan, I know, Mayor, you've asked about this, and there are some things to consider. Specifically, you can look at this a couple of different ways, age of the vehicle, mileage of the vehicle are the typical ways that you look at those. One of the things that we're looking at as a part of our fleet management plan is actually the vehicle history. If I have a vehicle that has 125,000 miles on it, but it had little or no maintenance, then that vehicle may be able to last another year or two. If I have a vehicle that has 85,000 miles on it, but it has a historically high amount of maintenance to be done, then that vehicle needs to be removed from the fleet sooner than a vehicle that's required no maintenance. So we'll manage those as, as appropriate as we, as we move forward. The thing that we need to be concerned about, and we'll, we'll look at this as a part of the fleet management plan and our disposal plan moving forward, relates specifically to the police department, and we've had this conversation before. If you look at the vehicles owned by the police department, they are about half and half general fund and drug fund. Obviously, the drug fund has dried up, as we've discussed, so as these vehicles purchased by the drug fund must be replaced, some decision's going to have to be made to move forward because all of those vehicles that were previously drug fund purchases will be general fund purchases or replacements. So as we move forward, we're conscious of that, we understand that the drug fund will not be able to fund those. We also understand, as if you look on page two, we do not want to get in a situation where we're purchasing vehicles with State Street Aid money. We want to make sure State Street Aid goes toward the, the intended purpose of State Street Aid as we know it, to take care of that. So what I provided for you is the vehicle list as of today, with the mileages of those vehicles, the source of funds that they were purchased with, and our consideration for how we'll fund them in the future, given the fact that most of these will have to be general fund rather than some other specific fund. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on these. Again, we've reduced the fleet by 15 over the last 12 months, we think we're stable with that, and we'll move forward with an appropriate fund based on vehicle history rather than a set mileage or age limit. So having said that, I'd be glad to answer any question you may have on the fleet or replacement plan. And if they're non-mayor and commission, that's all I have for you tonight.
No, but I want to say thank you for doing that. I think as important as we spend money and we know what the plans are, just being able to have that in front of us and updated is huge, so I appreciate that.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Potter? Commissioner Rainey?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Lucas?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Commissioner Burks?
I'd like to welcome our new police officers that we have, I believe it's a total of three, possibly four. Welcome to Fairview and thank you for serving our community.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Thanks. I just want to thanks all the friends of the library for coming out, that was a great group of volunteers, you know, anytime that we have help from citizens groups, it's always important. I just want to ask that y'all, moving forward, realize that it does get long and we all have long days, but, you know, just to be respectful, not making somebody feel like they're having to rush through something, if we'll keep that mindful. We're all tired and want to go home, so I just wanted to put out that reminder, and thank you. If I can get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a first? First and second? They moved.